Call roll.
Bird.
Here.
McGinn.
Here.
Science.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Phil Piper.
Here.
Williamson. Yes, Ray.
Here.
And number two, approval agenda. Any changes you want, uh, no changes this evening. Move to approve the second call roll.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Williamson. Yes, Ray. Bird.
Yes.
And number three, presentation addition, no communication. A twenty-nine seventy-three resolution fixing date for public hearing on the proposed proposal to enter into a development agreement with DJF, Boone Family LP. Call roll.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Williamson. Yes, Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
B, public hearing to consider the sale of five twenty-three, twelve-street, Hill Island. Any written comments? Any public comments? Not this public hearing is closed. C, public hearing to consider setting a max levy for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, but any written comments? Any public comments? Not this public hearing is closed. D, public hearing to consider fiscal year two thousand twenty-three capital improvement plan. Any written comments? Public comments? Not this public hearing is closed. E, public hearing to consider the proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the water treatment facilities, backwash, flow, or replacement project. Any written comments? Public comments? Not this public hearing is closed. Four, report to standing committees, policy administration, DJ.
No report, yes.
Public safety, Stephen?
No report. And there's going to be on a Wednesday, okay? Uh, utility committee, Stephen. Uh, no report.
Okay, G, economic development committee, Terry.
Um, yeah, uh, thank you, your honor. Uh, we had an ED committee, we, meeting, uh, last Wednesday at seven oh six Keeler and approved their request for a VIT grant, uh, based like, I know it's on the agenda, but I just wanted to let you know, for twenty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And that work will start as soon as the weather calms in spring. And that would be the last request under at this building site, eight weeks for max. So we, that would be it.
We also had a chance to review and discuss the, uh, Boone Family Development Project Agreement, twenty-second and Lynn, and I'll turn it over to Bill for DG.
Sure, so we, uh, ED looked at the development here, if there's one on your desk as, as well as the, uh, option of purchase. So there'll be no action taken on these until the March seventh council meeting, where you have the development, you can go the next two weeks and on March seventh, there'll be a public hearing for the development agreement for twenty-second and Lynn, and there'll be more details at, that night, uh, as we look to, uh, vote on that. But again, over the next two weeks, please reach out to me if you have any questions in the development agreement, if you have any questions on the development agreement or anything like that.
We also discussed another LMI project out on, uh, South Lynn and Hawkeye Drive, um, and I'll, again, I'll turn it over to Bill, there are a couple of them.
So as we discussed that in ED, there's another pending, uh, LMI project down on the south side at, um... At, uh, South Lynn and, and Marshall. This, this right now, uh, project has been in front of P and Z for, uh, to rezone it. At that meeting, the development company from Kansas, uh, withdrew, is rezoning at least temporarily because during the discussion determined maybe a traffic study is needed. So a traffic study is currently being completed, uh, once that's done, it will, it will buy the company, once that done, it will come back, uh, to the P and Z meeting, and so there's no decision by council, and I think it's just more for discussion to put it on your radar that that will come to this, uh, body at some point through P and Z committee, whether they approve it or do not approve it. Uh, to give you an idea... This is, now, this isn't the one in twenty-second Lynn, now this is the one, uh, at South Lynn and, uh, Marshall, or, excuse me, Hawkeye Drive, my mistake. So this is South Lynn, this is Hawkeye Drive. The proposal here is three sixteen plexes, so what that is, is three buildings, three stories high. From forty-eight, I think it's, the number of units is forty-eight. So prior to January first, uh, the ED committee, uh, Councilman McGinn was on, but, uh, Councilman Mormon were not, uh, there was some concern about this project, uh, because of the traffic out there and, and some history behind, to give you an idea, so the project in twenty-second Lynn, you'll see in there that they're giving, the city's giving them some assistance for their, for that project up there, but I would tell you that in the discussions, there was some ask as well about putting a sixteen-plex or a, uh, eight-plexes or twelve-plexes up there. We, as the city, as the ED committee at the time, uh, we're not in favor of that, and we worked with the developer to put, uh, two eight-plexes, they wanted three, and said we would not provide assistance for that. So as you build these out, the more duplexes and traplexes there are, then sixteen-plexes or twelve, the cost rise, which is the reason why the city chose to assist, because they wanted it up there because they wanted to be like a campus up there, where people weren't, uh, black and red would stack on top of each other. So this is, this is a little different, this is three sixteen-plexes, which the city was not, or at least ED committee when we went forward with it was not, um, in favor of that. So that's to give you some history with both projects. So this is the one that, again, is pending the traffic study. Um, now that we have a new council, as of January first, I can go to these meetings and I need, what I express needs to come from the elected officials, it's not really my, I don't vote on this, I don't have the authority to say certain things about these projects, so the reason we're discussing this tonight is I'm trying to get some input from the elected officials on how they want me to move forward on this project at South Lynn. Now, mind you, there's no decisions made tonight, right? It's still gotta go P and Z, whatever they decide with the, with the zoning, the rezoning, and the site plan, it's still gotta go through P and Z, so I don't wanna jump ahead, but I go to these, this is a meeting I've gone to, I've gone off of what I've heard in the past, I'm really trying to change over some people, or, excuse me, elected officials, so I'm really looking for some guidance here or ideas, by Frank.
Question, is there a need for it? Will that, or is there a demand for that kind of...
Well, the, the fact that the state agreed or approved the tax credits for both projects would show that there's a need, uh, but still, it's elected officials to decide, um, if they agree with that, I guess is the best way to do it. So by them getting tax credits, that tells me that the Iowa Finance Authority certainly think that there's a need in bone. I think a question that could be posed, elected officials, is, is how much LMI housing do you want in the city? Do you think that's a good one?
This particular spot, you have to decide, should it stay commercial, which I believe it should, or do you want more resident, I mean, it's, it's the prime piece of commercial property, which we are lacking anyway, okay? You, you tell me where there's other, where it's just hard to find. That's a good piece of property, and that's why it's zoned commercial. And if you talk to the businesses around it, I've talked to numerous, should say, handful of them, they don't want it. But that's...
Describe what businesses are around it, final.
You know where we're talking about, where it's at. So if you, if you went and buy a Vision Bank, getting to Walmart, and went to that four-way stop, that, on your, on your northwest corner, yeah, east of those storage. It's a, that, it's big.
As you said, it's fine.
Yeah.
Spot in a...
For a commercial type.
In a pretty busy location.
Very, yeah. Very busy. You know, you gotta think about, if you go that route, city's gonna have to hang up on all this talk we have about sidewalks, there's gonna be some sidewalks we have to go down.
Yeah, that's, that's been my concern about it, which is the, because there's, if there's gonna be, you got many people there, it's gotta be Wal, Walmart over there, and they, they wanna act, so if they can work out some kind of deal to put in sidewalks, you know, that's what they need, is my interest.
In the whole area?
At, at least on that, at least along, uh, at least along Hawkeye. Not so much on Lynn, okay?
So, a lot of that around that, at least at this point, is agriculture, is there a... And this probably isn't fair to ask you, because we can talk about other questions. Can we make, uh, owners of agricultural land put in sidewalks?
I would think we would have that. Wondering. Exactly right.
This is all the worst.
Right.
It's all commercially, I wanna zon it, rezone it, to...
What did, what did you say, on four buildings like this would include? On, 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 just their part, right?
Just the property, yes.
I would speak to this real quick. Now, I've read firms, and that was the feeling of the previous month. Yeah, counsel, counsel. But to me, that's gotta be...
Is there interest in, in that, you know, is there any...
As far as commercial.
Game theories of, yeah, on developing that commercialized...
Yeah, safe for ships, I don't know.
Or maybe they don't know it's...
I can say there, there's the property across the street, uh, to the south, just north of the dentist office, there has been sold to a commercial business, I believe, Elder and Jenny, if I am incorrect, if you want, but I think there's been a commercial business, purchased that property, they intend to build.
I can't believe you're...
And, and I'm not saying the business didn't, because they've asked, but they did not.
I was looking for a pigeonhole of yourself, without having, like you said, a place to grow, for that's good.
So what I'm gathering is, for that project at that location, there is some concern from the elected officials?
Yes.
Again, I'm not asking for a vote, because it's not on the agenda, I, I just need some input from...
I'm actually open for you, presidential, because the presidential's in the north, about another block, too, so that's, the sidewalks going, that's my only...
Is a concern about the sixteen-plexes, three sixteen-plexes?
So how many of that, oh, I guess, like, how many families are...
Uh, sixteen, sixteen families per building, that's sixteen, thirty-two, forty-eight, yeah, sixteen families per building.
Let me ask you this, is this a managed operation like Alice Place, where it's monitored closely, or you can't have somebody that's over or under this age, and you can't...
Sure. Listen, my contact with this developer's been limited, because they did not reach out until later in the process, when they were already applying, and they needed things from us in order to do it. I expressed, uh, some concerns that the ED committee had at the time, and, but I had not, I've had, you know, basically, based on tap, we want to develop, other than in the, uh, P and Z meeting, uh, when it was held, as far as anything to do this project.
I think, you know, there should be, I'd like to know what the residents across the street, they, I think they should be mindful, those folks spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on, on duplexes and townhouses and, I mean, yes, oh.
If I had to ask, just ask for Mr. Carr, if I got any comments on it, I have been associated with this, I was a owner, associated with this property for quite some time, I guess, two to three years. One offer. Which, which are you talking about? It is, it's on agriculture, five billion, right, right now, agriculture land, I just looked the other day, uh, short, but roughly brings in about three hundred and twenty-five dollars a year in property tax. I looked at Alice Place, their property taxes, and they're about forty-three thousand and some dollars per year. Ten years down the road, that's thirty-two hundred and fifty dollars at the past state level, or close to an hour and a half in dollars, if you do something with it. You know, you can keep the corn and beans, I'm not sure. Traffic study, I think will be interesting, to me, what a problem for Boone to have, with the traffic channel, you know, more than four cars in the stoplight. It's a, it's a super problem. I believe, from my knowledge, on this project, that it will be sidewalk on both Hawkeye Drive and that walk-in. It appears right now, like, maybe you could rezon it, and we could have the rest of that six point nine nine acres become, uh, storage units, what an attractive site that would be. At least there's storage in this right side, and it went, well, it had something that, would help take those signs down within walking distance, help take those signs now, out of all those dairy business, particularly restaurants, for part-time, full-time help, for walking, and you want to, you know, it just seems like, and this, this city, I'm digressing a little bit, I apologize, that, uh, I think this is a low, moderate income facility, similar to Alice Place, and we go so far with the city, and we're just gonna squash everybody, you know, we don't want you to feel too good about what they live, you know, we, we'll increase the living, uh, earnings a little bit, maybe... Let's take the move from downtown out into the Alice Place, or, or whatever, but once you get too many of them, you know, we're just gonna put the squash on, I'm saying, we, I don't say this council, I can say previous councils and all the way through, that, uh, the level of living, the standard of living, is a, is a feel-good type of thing for many, many people. And sometimes we in this community, not, not particularly here, but maybe you're also squish that feel-good standard level, the, I guess, the time and tell. Thank you for the invitation.
Hey, just for, so the council would know, you mentioned a company that we talked about, what is your, what is your tie with the company that you mentioned on this project?
Right now, I'm mayor and associate of real estate, has a property listed.
Okay.
And over in Park, I live, is the name of the company, they have made an offer on it. They have built properties in Calhoun, that's a tough place to build, but I think that's the most recent one. They were just looking at, now, Carol, the other day, strong life is in the building. I think Oswald's, I'm not sure, I think they've got a floor within Iowa right now.
Overland?
Oh, I think it's overland park, that's where I don't see, that's where, that's where I know them to be from, overland park, that's a city, well, that's where they're from, but that's my name, is development.
See, the argument on the other side of that is, when we talked about doing the north side, we had John Roman, um, John O'Neil, and those other, um, people have rental properties, so we were killing, so you, you're, you're building these things, and you're harming our business, and so there's arguments on both sides. And I was saying, now, just like, so to take someone, say, maybe they could move from downtown down to there, okay, that's great, but I know the guy that owns the buildings downtown, but he's not very happy about that, because he's down losing business. I'm just saying, it goes, there's, there's more to it than just...
I, I think you're probably, and again, you know much more about it than I do, there's not many movement made from up in the city, I think there'll be movement from outside of the city.
And that's good, yeah.
Because that was my question, is, is there need for residential housing, you know, and I don't know if we have any kind of survey or studies on that.
Need for housing all over the state of every county.
The gentleman in the city, the gentleman that spoke...
Or portable, kind of.
Before you approved the deal up north, the gentleman stood right here, and he says, you know, this unit up at twenty-second Lynn, he said, well, no, I almost got a written verbatim, I know it's a job, well, no, we'll solve the problem for housing, you know.
And we wouldn't be providing any incentives for this company to build, that makes...
Yeah, it's gonna say, completely on the back of the word, they're not asking, to pay. To my knowledge.
And what's the, what's the proposal about that investment now?
I'm sorry.
What's the proposal that investment, for this? One dollar amount?
Dollar?
One point five million, I think.
I don't know. I, again, I haven't any conversation with him, but to be fair, it has, he has been, you know, because it went to the committee for rezoning purposes, no side.
I think the other thing we, that we sort of think about is, if there are people that live on the other side of the street, it would be much more attractive for commercial developments along the south side of that street, too, because there are already people that walk in distance, wanting to build here, you know, and sugar in fairly a lot of business, Walmart wants business, too.
Well, I like the property values, too, is that Harper, Bird, their property value? You can put out three sixteen-plexes right across the street from, from these, uh, five-hundred-thousand dollars, I don't know, I would say aren't a lot, I mean, I'm just saying.
Yeah, there's an Indy in it, but, uh, no, there's always gonna be an Indy.
There's a lot, yeah, and so, yeah.
Do you know where Indy's from, all right? Nothing's gonna do with its formal requests, other than they actually become to a meeting.
No, no, I haven't, I haven't, I've seen them at the P and Z meeting, and then a couple of emails.
Okay.
Uh, so, okay, that's, and that's the purpose of the P and Z meeting, was to get permission or, or it to be rezoned, so it fits what they want to do there. And again, we're at the traffic study part, the meeting stopped, basically, and the developer said, okay, we'll do a traffic study, and then Perry from SEH, on behalf of the city, are keeping track, have you heard any progress on that traffic study?
I've heard.
Okay, so we're still waiting for that traffic study up there?
There's just a lot of questions, until we talk to them, I guess, I mean, is it managed? Is it, there's just a lot of questions. I'd like to know, we hear from the people that, that spent, not even build out there, you want that across the street, right, I don't know, I think they actually have some say.
Okay. That's mine. So Jim Otto will attend the meetings, and we'll just let them, and, and we'll, obviously, if there's concern on the traffic study, that's why Perry will help us with those, if he has some concern, he's, like I said, he's looking out for the city and making sure that the city's interests are protected, or at least brought forward on the traffic study.
I've, I've heard debate concerns about the traffic at twenty-second Lynn, and that is maybe closer to the traffic all year.
About this area, then?
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I think that practice thing is showing that intersection at South Lynn and Hawkeye is a problem.
Well, I thank you for this discussion, I think it's the one we should, at least your input on what some of you are thinking, and that helps us start moving both, so thank you.
Okay, um, next on the list is, uh, the, uh, reviewed six-twenty-eight story street, demolition change order, and, uh, the ED committee met tonight, we reviewed that change order, and, uh, you can see, uh, in your packet, it was six thousand, six thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars, uh, credit back to the, the project for leaving that retaining wall and the tunnel wall, and there that they ran into that difficult excavation. Uh, the ED, they talked about it and voted to, uh, bring it to council, and with our recommendation to approve. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Need a, uh, motion to approve the change order, correct? Okay, approve. Second, call roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
We also have, uh, on that same project, a six-twenty-eight certification, certificate of completion for a six-twenty-eight story, um, they are done, they have, uh, complied with all the provisions of the plans and specifications, and again, the ED council voted to, uh, accept their certificate of completion with, uh, your approval.
Frank, all roll.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Williamson? Yes, Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
I believe that's all I can, right, thank you, thank you. Uh, five department reports, is, uh, with us this evening, uh, that's the finance officer, Andrea. Uh, city attorney, yeah, no report, director of public works, John Os.
All right, your honor.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, engineer, Perry.
Yeah.
At least here, in case I mess it up, sorry I don't say something right. So on the agenda... Is the award contract for the water treatment plant exterior walls out of the water treatment facility, if you remember, we did this before, there was one bid, it was over budget, so, uh, it was rebid. So we've seen four bids for the exterior walls, uh, from TNT Tuckpointing, by State Masonry, RX Gravel Construction, Joe and Restoration Corporation, the low bid was TNT, uh, tuckpointing, for a total of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, six fifty-five, this includes the main water plant, and then I think another building on campus down there that needs it as well. Um, this is below the, the first time we've bid it out, this is, uh, within budget, we budgeted more money for this project for fiscal year twenty-three, so we are covered. Uh, budget-wise, uh, we have a letter from SEH recommending approval, uh, accepting TNT's tuckpointing and a motion to award the contract to TNT, and SEH will then work on the contract, bring it back maybe March seventh, if not the twenty-first, for final approval.
Make a motion, can we prove it?
Okay, call roll.
Williamson? Yes, Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
My next item, um... Is the South Main Water Main Project, replacing water bike, excuse me, that goes south on South Main, and then goes over east toward, uh, South Marion, West Park, who will be paving that, uh, road here in the, in the near future. Want to get you, so we have a letter from SEH recommending the project, you will see that there were six, Keller On Track Construction, Key Construction, Pro River Construction, J and K Contracting, Synergy Contracting, the low bid was Keller Estimating, they're a local company. The base bid was two forty-eight, eight hundred, and some change, and then the bid alternate on it was to, once they got to the end of Main Street, to take it east to South Marion and West Park, correct? And that was one thirty, so, uh, Keller is the low bid, we have a letter from SEH recommending that we accept a low bid of Keller for that amount, and award the contract to Keller Estimating for that project, and again, in March seventh or March twenty-first, SEH will come back with a contract for your approval. Do you have anything, Eric? So I asked for a moment, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Call roll.
Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And so, public safety chief, others?
Yes, your honor, uh, tonight, I just wanted to have a general, uh, conversation, Bill's gonna pull up, we've been working with the engineers on the fire department addition, and I just wanted to be able to show what we've come up with here. Uh, yep. Ta-da! It's not gonna fit real well in that one, we're gonna have to shape the truck a little bit different.
You post rate.
Try the other ones first. That's not the one you really wanted there.
Ah! All right, so on the, the bottom right picture, you can see where the current fire station is, uh, the stole bottling building, and the addition would be right in the middle of that with the, the bigger, wider door. Um, currently, it's projected to be about sixty-two, three feet, uh, long. two, three feet uh long by about uh twenty nine feet wide. Um, uh, with a, uh, the height will be actually higher because we can't uh tip up any of our cabs like in, in the current station. Actually, we found out with our new truck that there is a one inch clearance at the, the uh uh, Public Works Building when we're working on that. So even that building, as these trucks become what they are to, today and into the future, won't even be able to house that. We're taking that into consideration uh with that and with the aesthetic looks of, of uh doing some offsets uh heights and widths, obviously, to, to maintain. Um, and I guess tonight is just basically a conversation to see if, if you guys think that is okay to keep moving forward with the engineers. Um, again, uh, that's what I talked about with the engineers and, and between our two parties is it's two walls and a garage door, so it's nothing, it's not a fancy, it's nothing fancy. Uh, we did take it, uh, if you can see on the north side there, instead of incurring all the brick cost, um, you can see kind of where there's a lighter shade on the, the upper left hand, that's an Ephesus product, uh, which will actually reduce the cost of, of uh of material greatly, um, but still hold a fire va- uh rating and strength. So I would ask for any comments, concerns? The back is brick and the front is brick. Also, they actually have had a, a masonry person up here to match it. Um, and I, they showed me the shade and I'm like, I can't tell you the two difference. It's called something different than we currently have, but the shade is like the same thing, so. Not yet, that's what we're, we're still working through a couple of things with, um, uh, one of the things that we're looking at, so currently uh, there's a walkway kind of down there and I'm not sure why it was ever put in. We went through the old plans, it really doesn't say why. There's some steps that go down and kind of go back to the back parking lots. Uh, one of the things that we're looking at doing is there'll be a five foot separation. Um, the building to the north there still exits, they have an exit door out the south. Um, which i- i- they have an easement for some of their things on our property, uh, which we're dealing with that, uh, at the current. But what we would look at is actually, because those steps have to come out regardless for excavation and footing placement, is not putting those steps back in unless the council felt like it was a massive need for that. Uh, we don't see much foot traffic. The foot traffic that's on there is usually fire departments, people anyways to walk around to the back. Um, we're trying to look at a way to maybe not have uh transits kind of hibernating back in there, looking at some ways to, to, to try not to, to have it be a collection site. So we would take out the actual steps and, and it would be a, um, just a wall that would be right there. We're working there. Other than that, uh, I don't have anything other than open for questions. So we've just, Bill and I have just, uh, Bill and I have discussed that, if that's still something the, the council would like us to do, um, we would, I can sure uh go there with, and try to use some of their A R P money, um, otherwise the projects funded.
I'm just curious because since that fire truck will basically be used accounting type related fire issues, right?
We can sure, uh, approach them.
Do you want to give us some direction on that? I think once, I think once, uh, so, you know, cost, cost estimate stuff, I think I would. And sometimes there are some issues I think that's best to stop looking, maybe else.
I think for tonight, as long as you guys are good with the concept, I'll bring back more information with um cost estimates and those kind of things as we get closer and we can continue that conversation. Thank you.
So, uh, Paul, from the assessors office, we stout and asked if we would consider, and I think staff can do this, I'm going to bring it to you guys here where so he's having some issues with uh some of our citizens that are getting tax payment and are not being cooperative in their, in their residence uh being inspected so that the assessor can do their job. So he's asking if you would put something on our tax payment statement that states, because we don't have any at the present time, that if, if you do not cooperate with the assessor's office so that inspection can be made so they can complete their job and assess it at a true assessment uh that they would not receive tax payment from the city. And I think it's just a, a simple wording uh that staff can do. I just want to get your, if you'd like, if you're okay with us doing that. And we just add it to the uh tax payment form, so when they got that patient, it would be on there and they would sign it knowing that that's and then we would, staff would work out how that would work with the assessor's office.
Is it out of so many examples? That they contacted the client?
They're disappointed.
I mean, you know, it's fine, you wouldn't want to, I mean, is there gonna be?
No, I mean, I think they, they use their discretion and they figure out that they absolutely can't get ahold of somebody and I think.
And they, they, yeah, they may be doing it down there.
Yeah, suddenly if you don't cooperate.
Something that others think you.
Matters, he, he send me matters, uh.
Yeah, as long as it's not a press, then so I'm assuming it's legal.
Well, they're, I mean, yeah, in fairness, they're expecting tax payment from the city. Well, there, there are, yeah, there's responsibilities to that, right? Right, they have to be.
I think the problem is big, little, not all.
Nothing.
I mean.
Yeah, enough.
Anecdotal, we were making.
Causing frustration now.
What, anecdotal, when making my own day, you know, talk to more of it, and you're frustrated with not being able to get quite a lot of.
Is it a cooperation?
Yeah.
Time to add, and it's okay to add that, add some language to the uh tax payment.
And we're saying consent agenda, is there any items on the consent agenda that you'd like to move and discuss separately in the motion to approve? I do the motion approved, oh, sorry, one second.
I don't want to call anything, but I just wanted to just do one quick follow up.
Okay. Regarding.
Do you mind to say?
Yes.
So we had a discussion kind of informal, probably in the past when we.
We had a meeting, the meeting went well, they asked, one of their requests is that they don't have the equipment to pick up here. When we have them in the city, and I thought that was a reasonable request, staff can handle that, public works, that's no issue. Uh, they've had problems with their phones and their internet, considerable problems working with the carrier, both of their phone and their internet. Uh, that to me was a reasonable space because we've had the same thing here at City Hall. And uh, we talked about it and since that time, we've got an email that they'll fix. I know there were complaints, I think, I know from the mayor, uh, of response times of, of people getting back or somebody from there getting back to them. Uh, I think some of the problems they have that was happening because of that haven't fixed. Uh, John oversees that contract. I know there's some citizens that have some uh concerns about that and we'll certainly address them as they come forward. And uh, meet with John and, and, because he has a date that, I think not him himself, but his officers have a day to day contact with the humane society.
I know I've reached about five calls since even though when the from people in some reach out through social media, yeah, absolutely, it hasn't been hit, it hasn't been picked up or anything. We've tried to call, we called the comm center, comm center said, well, it's after five. You know, I'm gonna get them around, but.
Well, now that would constitute by a contract, that would leave an emergency to go sit, so they would have to be required to respond. The comm center should know that and, and reach out. I know that they're having uh some issues employing people and having enough staff. Who isn't.
Right.
But the.
It's still, they may whatever, paying one eighty three plus this eighty three thousand.
Yes.
A year. That's my, uh, the calls I've had is they can't get anybody to call them back. They can't get anybody to come, they can't get anybody to.
There you go, we don't like this.
The amount of what you do is, is.
Yeah.
These people are wanting to sit on the board.
And them a problem too.
But I don't.
Other people just want to call back.
At least call me back and say you're not coming. Yeah, or, or something, because if you leave a message and no one calls back, you're like, oh. Why did I call? Okay, no, it's fine, that's alright. Yeah, give your.
No, I know they're down to two full time employees, um, and they're struggling to find four part time employees. The one time they, like, I think they had five employees the one time. So they are definitely struggling. They did get their phones fixed, they've been fighting that for almost three months. Um, it sounds like talking to them, so that is uh up and running, so I think, I'm hoping from here on out, we have uh better communication with them.
Do your officers have trouble reaching them?
Um, it depends. So the problem, part of the problem is the emergency call out is based on their definition of first callers. So we call, if we contact them, they say, hell, that's not our emergency, then they will handle that call till nine AM instead.
Say it's two in the afternoon, you call there, nobody answers, the person calls the comm center, comm center calls you guys, you go, well, that's you probably get ahold of them.
So during, during the, yeah, during the day, they're regular hours. I mean, other than the phone issues, we haven't had too much trouble. It's the after hour stuff that, uh, and they're not a twenty four seven.
No.
So they're, they're nine to double check, nine to four, nine to six, someone in there, uh, so their hours are running pretty fast, so anything outside of that, unless it's an emergency, my knowledge my understanding, or at least talk about the emergency is gonna be like, as animals, when you perish, if we don't, they don't come out using the. Anything other than that, it's really not coming out of the after hours.
Except for we are, you can dispatch, you want to have to, but.
Oh, they don't, they certainly did not want to offer here. That was, that is a change in our.
We are.
Now, we're like. Yeah.
I don't want to see that. Alright, alright, so anything else on consent agenda, anyone on this test, and not any motion to approve? Okay, approve, thank you. All roll.
Bird.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
And number seven, ordinances, A, lay of second reading ordinance twenty two seventy five, amendment chapter three, wards to change the boundaries of the wards to equalize as close as possible the number of residents in each ward based on the last U S census. All roll.
Again.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Okay, third reading ordinance twenty two seventy five, amendment chapter three, wards to change the boundaries of the wards to equalize as close as possible the number of residents in each ward based on the last U S census. All roll.
Science.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Second. All roll.
Warren.
Yes.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Okay, C, second reading ordinance twenty two seventy six to allow the city to change the stop sign regulations on West First Street and Hurson Street. Second, all roll.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Okay, number eight, I have no comments. See, number nine, any council member comments?
Couple of things, just a reminder, the final public forum regarding the Rick Center will be this coming Thursday, February twenty fourth, seven PM here at City Hall. Auditorium, this is strictly going to be a question and answer session. We have no more new information to share, everything's out there, so strictly a question and answer. And then, uh, Greg, co-chair of the S committee and myself will be having our last coffee with the committee on Saturday, February twenty sixth at nine PM at the Dutch oven bakery and answering, finding questions prior to the vote.
Well, I hope some people show up and ask this same question about. It gets the same answer.
I'll answer them if they ask. They, I can't, I can't answer on social media, so I prefer they come to meetings and ask the questions.
And I keep getting the, the comment that we're not getting enough information about it. And I, you know, go through all the, you know, newspaper, radio forums and I, I just don't know what else we could. I, I said, that you suggest what else we could do to, to reach people, but.
Well, I've spent the last week talking to organizations and groups all this time. Sharing the information, I'm open that, I mean, I get messages all the time, I'm sharing information. We have been as transparent as we possibly can be. I have given, I can't give any more information because I don't have it.
And, and that's kind of what I said, I don't quite know what else we can do that, I mean, if you have ideas, but I said, I really feel that that we're reaching a lot of people. Are we reaching everybody? I'm sure not, I mean, you know, some people maybe are not.
Correct.
Well, they have to, at different times, but.
We've exhausted everything we. Been in the paper, it's been, I've been on the radio with Jen, Jen's been advertising it, so, uh, I don't know. Right, it's taken persons on social media, so.
I just hope people show up and, and, and show up and.
It's really sad because yesterday there was a post um asking if there was a pool. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and that's.
And that, uh, to me, that's a little alarming, but, um. I think.
Short of major.
Well, how do you get one or no?
Well, and I think we're all available to answer questions and, and so I think the information we're trying to provide, however we can. Um, I'm, like I said, I'm just hoping we get a good turnout, people realize this is a big opportunity and I also um, you know, I, I really appreciate Fairways jumping in and, and I think this is a great opportunity for Boone, so I'm hoping people show up and help.
Don't like, Ron said that, they don't let, don't give this back to Fairway, don't give it back to us.
Yeah, and I appreciate everybody's sharing that, yes, committee and and the S committee worked their butts off. There are council comments. Any public comments or items on the agenda? Okay, we got to, Alvin?
Well, no, I would just like to say as a citizen that I don't know how much more transparent you can be on the, on the center. And I, I, I think I can say this on this, I find it kind of comical that I'm so concerned about the franchise because I'm taking that out on my eleven hundred dollar mobile phone. Waiting for a fifteen hundred dollar development.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Problem is, there's an anti Boone group, they've always been there. Some of them are formal business people, they're just people that's, that stall growth in this community. Doesn't matter, I can tell you right now, there's people, you can tell this thing is free and they vote against it because they just think we're out of something. This is an opportunity for something for our children, for our, I've talked to so many people, they go uh, I talked to group ladies the other day, every morning they drive the engine just running. Every, every day, and they just go, I can't wait, I gotta leave town this morning. I said, I get it, so there's a, this is the chance, if you want something, because I'll be quite honest with you, for nineteen years I've sat here, I don't know, boys, there's nothing for our kids to do, there's nothing for the, you know, here's your opportunity, don't do anything for them. There it is.
Oh, yeah.
And I think people need to realize, this is not just in the set, I mean, there's so much more to it than that, and, and that idea that when we go to the Rick Center um, that's, that's.